Calling this meeting to order. Travis Scott, would you leave us an indication?
Stand please. That was great. Heavenly Father, we come to you today to do business on behalf of this community that's made up of wonderful people and great leaders, Lord. We ask that you help us make the proper decisions to best serve this community and the leaders that work here, the families that live here, and the staff that works here as well. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Tonight, we have the privilege to have the Girl Scout troop, 6-1-4, to lead us in invocation. Girls, if you would stand up, come up to the front, turn around and face the audience. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, girls. All right, gentlemen, can you see the agenda before you? Are there any amendments anybody would like to make to this agenda?
Mayor, I see before us is additional consent agenda item.
It's just additional information.
If there's no additions, I'd like to call for a vote to approve the agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. All right. First things we need, presentations. Chief Scott, if you'd come up. The chief is going to do it. Chief, I'm going to let you read. You can stand inside chief, please. Tonight, we've got three police officers who are up here for administration oath of office, and I'm going to let the police chief read it. I'm going to read this once. Can I have the other two officers come up? Oh, it's just this one. I'm sorry.
Just swear.
You're going to do a good job?
Tried to.
All right, repeat after me. I, Terry Douglas White.
I, Terry Douglas White, man.
The undersign.
The undersign.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will faithfully and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will faithfully and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authority which are.
And to the constitutional powers and authority which are.
Or may be established for the government thereof.
Or may be established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend the Constitution of said state.
Maintain and defend the Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
That I will not be influenced in any manner on account of personal bias or prejudice.
That I will not be influenced in any manner on account of personal bias or prejudice.
And that I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office.
As a law enforcement officer according to the best of my skills, abilities, and judgment.
As a law enforcement officer according to the best of my skills, ability, and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Each of these officers, and I'll make a little speech, which is very familiar. Police don't get paid a lot and the jobs tough, and there are times that they really put their lives in line for a little bit of money. So it's very impressive. Each of them getting an award. Award reads the same, so I'm just going to read one award. They just put their name on there. But they're all the same. And it says, "Life-saving Award." This certification is an award to Officer Jordan B. Crutchin, Victor D. Denoble, and Robert J. Stewart. On May 10th, 2014, at 2:55 a.m., officers responded to a shooting at 1300 South Brightleaf Boulevard in Smithfield. Upon arriving at the scene, officers located a gunshot victim lying in the crowded parking lot. The victim had sustained a total of six gunshot wounds to the torso and upper extremities and was bleeding profusely. Officers worked aggressively to stop the bleeding until the arrival of Johnson County Emergency Medical Services, who worked to further stabilize the victim and transport him to the hospital. Officers' actions regarding this incident were exemplary and result in the saving of the officers' lives. That's really something for a round. Which one is it? Jordan or Crutchin? Jordan. We also have, which I have to say, I've been to city council for years, I've never given I think it's very impressive. Anybody want to take? Does any family members want to take photos? Come up to the front.
Can we have you come to the front? Over here?
Sure.
Thanks.
If any city council would like to come and join me, I'd be happy to do it.
You look so distinguished there, representing the house.
Mayor, before they leave, are their families here?
Yes.
Could the family stand up too, please?
Mayor, I'd like to make a statement real quick. I'd like to say thank you specifically to this group. I was actually on that same scene that night. Most of you know I work in EMS, and that's a very, very heroic effort that these guys performed in ever to save a citizen's life. They go above and beyond more than you may realize. And guys, I know how hard it is out there, and I really appreciate every one of you, especially the ones sitting in the back. The leadership that the department has, it's a lot to be proud of. It's very much to say, it's very minimal. I know they don't get paid a lot, but it's very... People just don't understand what they put up with. But this is a very outside of the duty, very, very appreciative thing. So thank you guys very much for what you do.
All right, we've got two more proclamations, and I'm going to ask the ladies of the Smithfield Bryan Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution to come up to this front right now. It's this Constitution Week, and I've got a plaque, and I'm going to read it. Whereas September 17th, 2014, marks the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebration which will commence the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issue of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, John Harold Lampy II, Mayor of the town of Smithfield, hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2014, to be Constitution Week in Smithfield and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution had in 1785.
Thank you. And we would like also present to you a Constitution poster. We hope you will hang it in Town Hall, and the bells represent on September 17th, we're asking all citizens to ring their bells. That was the time that supposedly that our forefathers signed the Constitution, and we're asking churches to ring their bells also on September 17th.
Thank you.
Was there a particular time for ringing the bells?
Four o'clock. I'm sorry. Four o'clock. Thank you so much.
One more proclamation. We're going to declare September as Recovery Awareness Month, and I'm going to ask Rachel Ayers to come to the front. I'm going to read the plaque. The town of Smithfield proclaims September 2014 as Recovery Awareness Month. Whereas one in four adults experience mental illness every year, and whereas 20% of youth aged 13 to 18 experience a mental disorder in a given year, and whereas drug and alcohol addiction are the number-one health problems in the U.S., and whereas an estimated 20 million Americans aged 12 and older use an illicit drug in the last 30 days, and whereas serious mental illness costs American businesses $193.2 billion in lost wages every year, and whereas more than half of all adults have a family history of alcoholism, whereas probable drinking, problem drinking, and whereas approximately one in 12 adults are addicted to alcohol, and whereas the substance abuse collaborative of Johnson County and its partners are hosting a recovery and celebration event with the theme of Join the Voices for Recovery: Speak Up, Reach Out. On September 13th, 2014, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., the event will include food and live music, and will be held at First Mission Baptist Church, 403 Casual Street, Smithfield in C. Now, therefore, I, John H. Lampy, and Town Council of the town of Smithfield hereby proclaim the month of September 2014 as Recovery Awareness Month. The mayor and the town council encourage all citizens to support the local communities' efforts to provide service and support to the people of the country. I spoke for all. There's one more presentation. I'm going to ask Andre Neighbors, Tourism Development Manager, the retired NC program, come to the front and present your information.
All right.
I'm going to let you take that one by yourself.
No, hold on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Town Council member, I'm going to pass these around for you all to have as some packets that we send out to a lot of the potential North Carolinians that have been in North Carolina, that are potential retirees, retirees to any of the towns here. I talked with Mr. Perry, Mr. Harris, probably a couple, three, four weeks ago about this program. It's a brand-new program. It's not brand new, it's about a two-year program offered by Congress with the Division of Tourism, Film, and Sports Development. We're actually overseeing this program now. It's a certified retirement community program. It's been in legislation through the General Assembly that allows the North Carolina Division of Tourism, Film, and Sports Development to work with this program. I'm trying to open this as expeditiously as possible with time constraints there. I know everyone's ready to get on to the meeting here, but we always talk about, I always start off when I talk about this program, about what the Division of Tourism does. Our main goal is for it to have more people coming over to stay longer and spend more money. And the ways to do that, you know, that we strategically use marketing, marketing investment. We take the little bit of dollars that we have granted by the General Assembly, but we strategically look at where we actually usually spend those dollars and what we're actually, what our actual target is to get those folks to come to North Carolina and spend those dollars. And we leverage our resources through partnerships. So we work with all 100 counties, we work with all the tourism development authorities, all the visiting visitor bureaus, all the attractions, and they partner with the Division of Tourism to take a small budget and make it into a much larger budget, to get North Carolina out there to work for that matter. We also have offices in Canada, in the U.K., and in Germany as well, and Canada also. Again, we have about, we have the direct visitor spending, about $20 billion a year. It's been going up every year with the exception of 2009, and everyone knows kind of, I think everybody was a little bit down around that time because there was also a time in the economy kind of drop, which is real. And with our marketing efforts, we also use, we measure our success through research. Business research is something really big with us. We look at our economic impact on how we're using our dollars and how we're leveraging our dollars and bringing that economic impact on the state of North Carolina. Our return on investment, we have about a 17-to-1 return on investment, meaning every dollar that we spend advertising or promoting the state of North Carolina is a $17 return to North Carolina. We use web analytics, social engagement, as well as, and again, cargo investment to get that name out about North Carolina and bring those talents into the state. So I always start off with that because it's a, the retirement program is kind of a funny program that we have in the Division of Tourism. Our job is to go out and get people from out of the state to come and travel to North Carolina, stay as long as they can, spend as much money as they have in this legal state, go and tell their friends, and maybe come back at another time and spend even more money. So it's a little different than having, it's a little different than having a retirement program housed in the North Carolina Division of Tourism. But I think the General Assembly assigned that to us because, again, our strategic marketing efforts, getting $20 billion in direct spending because of our marketing efforts, that that's why the General Assembly put this program within our division, again, because we have marketing tools, we have the audience, and they also, they also know that most people, before they make a decision to change residency or to move to another area, they usually visit that place sometimes five, six, seven times before they make that decision. So I think because of our marketing efforts and where we get our digital call out to other states, to other folks in other states and other countries as well, I think that's why the General Assembly put house this program in our office. So again, there's a bill, Senate Bill 1627, that has asked the Department of Commerce to operate the Certified Retirement Community Program. Basically, what we do is, the program is designed to promote North Carolina as a preferred retirement destination, assist communities in developing and marketing to attract potential retirees, assist in the development of retirement and continuing care communities, promote economic development and job creation, as well as encouraging the tour market to travel and one day get a set of residents in North Carolina. The criteria for eligibility guidelines for the program, basically you have to be incorporated city, town, or municipality in order to apply for the program. This is all written in the legislation. And that's also in the packets there as well, so the application, the legislation, the guidelines, criteria, all that's in the package as well. You also have to be within 30 miles of a hospital or emergency medical facility, establish a retiree attraction committee, and that attraction committee is really designed to do an assessment of the town, look at the marketing efforts, look at some of the needs, what are some, kind of look at what are the things that are attractive to potential retirees. Also, the community is designed to develop a marketing and public relations program, as well as a long-range community development program. And always, the big stickler to the program is there is a application fee of $10,000 or 50 cents multiplied by your population, whichever is greater. And that's over five years span, so it's $10,000, where it's $10,000 for five years within the program. At the sunset of the application is when you would submit another application to the Department of Commerce, the additional, additional part. The process is we do applications on January 31st and July 31st, so the next, we just finished up a round of applications just last a couple of months ago, and then we'll be looking for another round in January. Usually, once the application is ran, an answer is given back to the community. Within 120 days, usually just within about 30 days, we, the committee, reviews the applications and has a rating scale that they look at, they rate each town, and then the committee kind of chooses, scores over the desired member at the town to be part of the program. And then again, the community selects it on the information, the application is consistent with the progress of Senate Bill 16. So I always say the $10,000 question is what do you get for your $10,000? We've already established a micro site on the Visiting C website for Division of Tourism, so we have a retiree C website that's devoted to the certified communities. As a state agency, we still market North Carolina as a place to visit and a place to retire, but we also focus on those certified communities. So the certified communities are in North Carolina, on our retiree C website. This is just kind of rendition of what Ashville, we have nine, actually nine communities that are in the program right now. Ashville's one, Lumberton, Marion, Out West, Mary, Out West, we have Tullburg, Eton, Town Eden, Sanford, I want to miss this one. Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh, the other. But those nine towns are actually highlighted on our retiree C website and along with the other marketing that we do as well. We also, we need marketing, we put together newsletters that we send out quarterly, so we send that information out to all the potential retirees that are out there looking for, looking at North Carolina as a place to retire. Social media as well, we have our Facebook site that's up, so we also market only our certified communities on our retiree C website as well, so there's different things going on in those communities. We post that information up on our Facebook page, send that out to our followers as well. We also use our business services, the packets that you guys have, that's kind of our fulfillment piece as well. So when someone calls our office, or calls our call center, or recommends a prison, and wants to move, that's where the actual call center is now, in Raleigh there. But whenever someone calls and wants information about the state, about North Carolina, or one information about the retirement of North Carolina, they get one of those packets sent out to you, as well as they may call us and say, well, we want to know information about Asheville, or we'll send them information about Asheville, but they also get a packet all about certified communities. So that's another big advantage of those that are part of our program. We also have information on our state travel guide every spring every year as well, and the packets are also located in our welcome centers also. Consumer shows, we do the AARP convention, as well as Ideal Living Showcase Expo. We do about four of their eight showcases a year. We pull in about a little over 1,200 leads from the AARP show, and about 300 to 400 leads from each Ideal Living show. And those are only given to those certified communities that are part of the program. We also looking at some other opportunities where we do co-op marketing with our certified communities as well, so although we will probably open the co-op marketing to all of the areas in North Carolina, but our certified communities require placement, and they also did a lesser price in the co-op program as well. So that's just another advantage of being part of the program. And then public relations as well. We do different media missions where we go to New York, we talk to a lot of the different publications, we do online media events as well, we do local media events also, and we highlight our certified communities within those programs, in that program as well. So whenever we're out talking to writers or is doing articles in AARP magazines, or writers that are doing articles in Ideal Living magazine, where to retire, we really focus on our certified communities, to those writers, and see if we can get some earned media from, and only for our certified communities. And again, you know, we use research as well. There's one, one thing that was probably lacking right now is, because of the program, it's only about two years old, there's not a whole lot of research out there. Yes, 30 people moved to Marion because of this program. We don't have those numbers yet, but we are gathering, working, gathering that data now with each of the communities that are part of the program. And that's pretty much the read-as-digest version of the program. So if you all have any questions that I can answer for you, please, please, just let me know.
Are you getting any feedback from the communities that are certified?
Yeah, I'm getting a lot of feedback. They get all the leads that we have. Tullburg and Eton are very new, they actually, they were just in the program a couple of months ago, but they're all light enough to do the shows with us. They're very pleased with the amount of leads that we're sending, and we also qualify those leads as well, so it's not just going to the show, giving a bunch of names, and then taking them right back to the communities. We actually qualify those leads as well, so we know if they're looking at North Carolina, they're looking at coastal communities, if they're looking at mountains communities, if they're looking for, they want to be close to a major airport, we qualify those leads and we get those leads in, we know what to say. We got a pretty good idea of what those, those potential retirees are looking for. Most of the shows that we do, particularly with Ideal Living, are in the Northeast, so it's the Connecticut, the New Jersey, the Rhode Island, or Massachusetts, we also do Chicago, and even Michigan area as well, and then Washington, D.C., is another big location for us.
Rumor has it our president's bought a retirement home in Asheville. Do you think you had anything to do with that personally?
Yes. Yes.
Good job.
But again, my cards and the packets there as well, so if you have any questions about the program, feel free to give us a call, let me know. And just one other, we have about the $10,000 as well. $10,000 does not all have to come from the city. The purpose of the program really is to develop partnerships, and that's really what the Department of Commerce and Division of Tourism are about, developing those partnerships. So when you, so when you're looking at putting your retirement attraction committee together, that's part of that partnership. Those, you want to have the folks who are in that committee that are members of the community, members of the business community, but also are willing to make that investment into the program as well, as well. Example would be like Pittsburgh, maybe put in about three, the town probably put in about 3,500. The rest of the money was actually raised by the committee and was put in from some of the partners that were within the community. So the retirement communities and some of the real estate... So, the retirement communities, uh, and some of the real estate agents, uh, hospitals in the, in the area, they're all eligible. So, it doesn't, the town, only the town has to be the applicant, it don't have to be the ones that come up with any of the money. For that matter, it just has to be the applicant.
All joking aside, I think it's a good program. Anything we can do to promote, people moving to Smithfield, I think it's a good idea. I think Perry likes the idea. What you want to say?
Yes, I, I would like to, uh, ask the council to allow, uh, this to go forward. What that means to me is that we would look to start forming a committee, uh, we would start to look to receive partners to help pay for this. I believe there's an opportunity there to, to, uh, to fund the majority of it somewhere else, be it the Fisher's Bureau, the Chamber, or, or Hospital, and I would like for an opportunity to start going down this road, to put a committee together, to, uh, look into, uh, looking at starting a program like this.
Would you, would you like to be on that committee?
What, Perry, why don't you work with a manager and y'all get some ideas and let the rest of the council know by email? I mean, I don't know that we need a motion at this point.
Yeah, no. Is that a motion?
No, I don't think we need a motion, but I think it's good idea.
Well, I don't know, I, I've, I've, I've got some citizens already who are, are interested in participating. We, we haven't gone to establish a committee, which is one of the requirements, uh, and I would like to just get the blessings, call it a motion what you want to. I'd be glad to work with Paul, I just want to make sure that, uh, council is okay with us moving forward with this idea.
All right, well, I'm gonna look for a vote, for somebody to, the council's approval for Perry to, to research it further. How's that sound? Just, you know, more than a vote.
I'm not so sure that, I'm not so sure that requires formal action at this point, but if you want my blessing, you have my blessings.
Mine as well. I, Paul, are you just working out with?
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, there's nothing wrong with, uh, just a moving forward kind of motion, if that's, uh, if that's acceptable, that way we know we can start talking to committee members. The next step would be, uh, you know, to get some help from Mr. Neighbors with that formation, come back to council with, uh, the first real step, if that's the point, a committee, and then just, and just moving forward. I think that's fine, if y'all, uh, if y'all want to just give us a, a vote to go forward.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Support.
Okay.
All right. All right, Ms. Neighbors, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Would you like, I can actually save this one, computer, the presentation, if you'd like.
Uh, we've got, I think we've got the printout, so I think I've got enough.
We have some extra brochures up here if the paper and the radio station would like to have one. I hope you write that big story for us.
Yeah.
I, 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 can I just say, I'm excited, I'm excited about this opportunity. Um, when I started, I had Mr. Eddie Foley stepping out of the back there when he and I had some conversations, thank you, Eddie. Um, we started looking at this program, and we started talking about Smithfield, and I, I don't think many people stop and think, what all we have to offer here? Um, we have, we have a tremendous opportunity in this community for retirees. You look at all the infrastructure we have here, we, we have it all. Uh, and on top of that, we have a tremendous, uh, amount of single-level homes retirees would be attracted to. I think there's, it's just a lot of wonderful things here in this town that would be attractive to retirees, and I think this, this, uh, is a good opportunity for the city.
I think in-town living is, is important for retirees too, because, and I've said this many times before, you know, when you can drive five blocks and be at your church or doctor in the grocery store, that becomes very, very important as we get older.
And there's some, so many things that we have here that we take for granted that are very appealing to retirees, um, and, and we just need to, uh, work down that road and, and get a good committee together, and I'll work with Paul and his staff to brainstorm some ideas of folks we think would be good for the committee, and, and, uh, we'll see what we can come up with, you guys.
Question, Councilman. Uh, why couldn't this coincide with the economic development committee?
Could. I have no problem with that.
Committee's already formed, so why don't we just?
Yeah, and Rocky's gonna include this a little bit in his report too, I sent it to him after Perry brought it up last, last month, so it'd be perfect little.
The more the merrier.
Okay.
Thank you, Charles.
All right, um, we have no public hearings, so we're open for citizen comment. Uh, if anybody wants to say anything, we're open to the citizens. Give you a brief, brief time to speak. You can stand over there, and we'll need you to, to state your name and your address for the, for the record.
Sure, my name is Michelle Denning, and my address is one zero five two North Lakeside Drive, Smithfield. I just wanted to come by tonight to introduce myself. I know, I know most of you, um, some on a deeper level and some on a, um, more superficial level, but I want you to know who I am, because I'm running for Johnston County's Clerk of Superior Court. And in November, we're gonna elect a new clerk of court. And I couldn't think of a better night to be here tonight, as I've sat here and I've watched the law enforcement be sworn in, and those receive awards. It reminded me, my grandfather, growing up, retired after thirty-some years in law enforcement, and he served as chief, he worked for the sheriff's department, and he was my hero. And really truly, he's still living today, he still is my hero. And then I sat and I watched, and I listened to the proclamation about the Recovery Awareness Month. And I thought about how appropriate that was, because both of those things fit in to who I am. In two thousand and four, I lost my mother to a, um, drug overdose. And all of those things together, those life experiences have taught me compassion and how to deal with people. This, being in the legal profession is not something that I chose, I tell people that it chose me. When I was nine years old, I can remember standing on the playground, and I decided I wanted to be a lawyer. Now, I did many other things in between. I studied communication, did a little political studies, a little bit of public administration, and I was working for the Department of Transportation, and one of my coworkers said, "Michelle, you're not really happy doing this. If you could do anything in this world, what would you want to do?" And I said, "Well, I've said since I was nine years old that I wanted to be a lawyer." And she said, "By God, please go to law school." Well, when I went to go talk to my boss about it, she said, "Michelle, why do you want to do that?" And I said, "Because I want to help people." And she said, "Well, you can help people here." And I said, "Well, absolutely, sure I can." But being in the legal profession has given me a unique opportunity to help people that need second chances, and to help people when they really need help the most. And that's what I've done. When, after I finished law school, I did come back, I was in private practice for a little while, but I started with the Industrial Commission, and I have committed my entire career to public service, and I'm proud of that. And more than that, it comes with responsibility. When we look at our clerk of court position, there are many administrative functions to the clerk's office, but the clerk, his or herself, has a primary responsibility of being a manager, a leader, and a judicial officer. They're making judicial decisions every single day that are affecting the lives of citizens right here in Johnston County. I know that responsibility. Working for the Industrial Commission, I know what it means to have to look at a case and make a decision of what's fair and just for a man who's lost both of his legs. I know what it means, the responsibility of having to look and read about a family whose father was killed when a trench collapsed on him and he suffocated. And I know what it means to have to read the transcript and listen to the deposition testimony of a mother whose child's been run over by a school bus. And I know the responsibility of making those tough decisions. And that's what I want to bring to the Johnston County Clerk's Office. I think back when I started in private practice, I also started teaching at Johnston Community College. I taught in the paralegal certification program and the business technology program. And I did that, and I continued to do that for nine years, because I believed in giving back to the legal profession, because it's important to our community. Tonight, what I'm asking is for you to put your trust in me. Back in March, when our house caught on fire, and I know some of you have probably heard this story before, but it's something that affected our family, but as those firefighters left, and by the way, do not ever cut funding to the fire department, please, they do an excellent job, but when our house caught on fire and those firefighters were running out, or running in, we were running out. Tonight, those law enforcement officers that received, that were commended for their life-saving skills, they didn't happen overnight. It took years of training, hours of training. Same with the law enforcement and with the fire department. When they came in that night, they knew exactly what to do and how to handle those situations, and it took hours of training and skill. It didn't happen overnight, but they had to make those tough decisions right then. And I recognized then that it was my trust that I put in them to make those decisions because of the skill they had. So, that's what I'm asking you to do tonight. I'm asking you to put your trust in me to make those tough decisions for your family, for your constituents' family. I didn't just decide overnight that I wanted to go into public service, or that I wanted to run for office. I have worked for many, many years for positive change in our community. I've served on various boards and commissions right here in this community to give back and to serve others. So, in November, put your trust in me to make those tough decisions. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and, um, I do have some information, and I will leave it for you, if that's okay, that has, just tells a little bit about me. And, uh, I invite you to visit our website, it's denningforcourt.com. And thank you also for what you're doing here in the community. As I travel around the county, and, uh, I'm even living here in Smithfield, I've learned so much about the wonderful positive things that are going on here that you don't hear about every day. So, thank you.
So, anybody else who'd like to, um, say anything? All right, this time I'm gonna close the, um, public time. I've got a consent agenda, and I need a motion and a second to approve it.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right. All right, on the business items. First item is consideration to contract approval for online bill payment services. Greg Seiler, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman. Well, um, there were several emails out today with, um, questions regarding online bill pay, so I think I'll just start there and answer those questions, a couple of them, um, that was sent out by Commissioner Harris, and then we'll entertain any other questions that you may have. One of the questions today was, why don't we, um, provide online bill pay in-house, do it ourselves? Um, I'm gonna give you a two-part answer to that question. The first is, the town currently doesn't employ staff with the ability to design and build and maintain a webpage. Development of such software, uh, that would also interface with our, um, general ledger system, or utility system, would be very costly and time-consuming for the town. Not to mention the town, the second part of that is the town would have to meet what's called PCI compliant at level one. When you take sensitive information online from customers' credit card informations, you have to have, um, firewalls in place to deter fraudulent activity. Again, the town doesn't employ staff currently that have the capability to build and design such software. And, um, let me see, one additional question I'll go ahead and answer was, um, Selma also is using the company that, uh, that I'm recommending. Their online bill pay, um, convenience fee currently is a dollar ninety-five, and I think the question was, why is this same company wanting to charge Smithfield two dollars and forty-five cents per transaction? And the answer to that is, um, our average bill is higher than Selma's average bill, in that we provide water, sewer, and electricity. Uh, in addition to that, we add on trash pickup, um, yard waste, and I think there's another that I'm overlooking. So, all of those, um, things makes the average cost of our bill higher than theirs, therefore their transaction fees is higher. Now, what the company's willing to do, and there's risk on our side, is after three or four months of actual history, they can go back to determine if they have artificially set that, um, transaction cost of two forty-five too high. The risk in doing that, um, versus just being on a two-year contract, is that fee could also be considered too low, and it would give them the chance to increase the cost at that time.
Greg, is it, this is for online bill pay. If a citizen walked in the door and wanted to pay their bill on a credit card, would that go through this system?
No, sir, it would not. This is just an additional avenue for people to pay their utility bills.
So, people who come through the door and, and pay with a credit card, the town is paying a percentage of the credit card company?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. And that's, that's done anywhere you present a credit card or debit card with a MasterCard Visa logo.
I mean, do we have a bunch of, what's the volume of bills paid through credit cards?
That's a good question. I don't know the exact answer to that. The number is constantly increasing, and that's because more and more of your check writers, um, are passing on, so to speak.
Right.
Our generation, the new generation today are debit credit card users that don't carry cash like perhaps my generation. And so, that number's increasing, um, month after month, year after year.
Do we think that our collections rate will, uh, be better if we offer the service?
I'm sorry, say again.
Collection rates on, on our bills?
I don't think it's gonna improve the collection rates. Typically, where we have a problem with collection is someone writing a check that's insufficient and/or just not paying.
People who aren't gonna pay aren't gonna pay.
Correct.
So, Greg, to be clear, is this option is for people who want to pay their bills at home or in office. It gives them another option, our citizens another option to pay their bills.
That's correct.
Remotely.
That's correct. In addition to what we already have, which is point of sale, um, and monthly bill draft, this is just an additional option for customers to pay that utility bill.
Can they set it up as automatic payment, or does it gotta be every time?
It's every time. And the reason for that is, in order for it to be automatic, you've got to store credit card data. That's a whole different level of being PC compliant that we have to meet.
Will you accept the same credit cards that you accepted at the window?
Correct. MasterCard, Visa, and Discover.
Now, my understanding, this is just a piece of the puzzle. You, you have a long-term goal, but this right here, this proposal is just a piece of the puzzle, of the long-term.
Well, that's correct. When we get improved software, ideally, we want online bill pay that interfaces with our software, such that a customer can go online and immediately they can look at, um, what's due, um, usage history, that kind of thing. This is the very rudimentary type of online bill pay. Customers have to, again, have their account number, uh, they have to have their service address, they have to know how much they want to pay, because the system won't provide that for them.
I have another question. Have you explored, uh... Have you explored PayPal?
I have not explored PayPal. Again, it has to, and I'm not an expert at this by any means, but there are just certain levels of security that we have to have as a taker of credit cards.
Would you consider that as well, investigate or explore, looking into that?
Would I or did I?
Or would you? I know you said you didn't, but would you?
I certainly, I certainly can.
I mean, it's a national card network, payment, online payment network.
Right, but the little I do know about it, it works similar to what these agencies are doing. They set up a link on our website. They take payments, and then their fees apply. There is not an avenue where fees won't apply. The question here for the counsel is, who's going to absorb the fee? Will it be the town or the customer?
Why can't we split it?
It could be split.
The fee that's posted here, it's $2.45 per transaction. Is that correct?
Correct.
Where does that money go? Is that, does the town make a profit off that, or does that all go to the company?
Absolutely not. It goes to the company. What would happen if you chose to absorb the fee is that that fee gets passed on to the town. They'd send us a monthly invoice for a number of transactions times that fee.
And when Greg talks about the fee, the miracle amount, the flat first-up-front fee, there's still another percentage of the total electric bill in this case, or whatever bill it's going to be. Roughly 1.8%, 1.75% of the total bill is also paid to the credit card processor.
Well, the, let me back up. The way any credit card transaction work, whether you present it to the town or you walk into your local American Eagle store, is that when you buy something using that credit card, that store has to share a percentage of that sale with the credit card company. So they get a piece of the pie. On top of that, the bank that it goes through wants an additional piece of the pie. So MasterCard/Visa piece of the pie is absolutely non-negotiable. They will not talk about their rates as far as reduction. What the bank charges is negotiable. And so therefore, we recently switched from First Citizens Bank to PNC Bank with point-of-sale transactions because PNC portion was considerably less than First Citizens. So there's two parts to that charge picture, but you get one bill. It's all, it's all billed at one time.
I would encourage the counsel, if it was me, I would bill for the whole transaction. And I'll be upfront about it. And for people who don't know, my family runs a sawmill here in town, Lampin-Malfris. My father has a Cabela's credit card, and he comes down and pays his bill, and it's $60,000. And he's accumulating a lot of points off the town because the town's paying two or 1.8 to 2.25% of the bill to the credit card processor. And that's how they give you your airline miles or your Cabela's points back. And, you know, it's one thing to offer the convenience of a credit card, but it's another thing for people to charge large amounts and abuse the system. I think, I think the people should be charged back for the use of the credit card.
That particular issue with your dad's account won't be remedied here.
That's correct.
That's something I will happily bring to the counsel going forward as to whether or not we want to continue to take transactions of that size from commercial companies, knowing ultimately, it's the town that's paying the rewards.
Well, I would encourage you not to take them.
Well, it seems to me that what we're talking about, are we willing to spend $1,500 for the convenience of our citizens to pay on a computer at home or at work? And I have a question about one of the statements in your report. "Since system integration with our existing software is not an option, payments have to be manually reposted in-house after payment notification is received from NCO." What type of labor cost are we looking there having to repost and watch we get notification from this company?
The labor costs for the town won't increase any. We're running all transactions now. Again, this is ideal for the customer. It doesn't save the town any work in that we'll still, we'll get a list as opposed to waiting on customer by customer. The time it will take to process that list of transactions certainly will be shorter. But it doesn't necessarily reduce the workload for the town at this point.
Do we currently pay, our bills are, when we pay our bill, we mail them to Charlotte.
That's one way to pay.
And for those of us who still write a check, how much are we paying that Charlotte company? Whoever's collecting, who's collecting, who in Charlotte's administering that money?
First Citizens Bank.
Okay. Are they charging us for that?
It's built into their overall account activity. So no, there's no separate charge for it. There's no separate charge, but at last time I talked to them, they told us we had to maintain several million dollars on deposit to offset all charges, so.
And keep in mind too, that the, not the ones you pay at the window with credit card, but the ones you pay like on the phone when they call in, which is a good number, we are paying that matching fee. So whether it's, I mean, like I said, the amounts are anywhere from, it looks like about 1% to 2.5%. We won't be paying those. That will be paid, so we'll net the benefit of that, basically. There'll be a charge of $2.45 to the customer, but we won't just be paying that money out. So we will actually net money on that, and we're paying some $60-plus thousand in credit card and bank fees, basically, for these transactions. So like Greg said, we're not sure exactly what that ratio is in total credit cards, and then how many are paying with a credit card at the window, which we won't really gain much on right now, and how many are paying with a credit card phone. But there will be a good number. There's a lot, I mean, there's a lot of credit card call-ins that we do process. It'll easily take care of the $1,500. I mean, there isn't, I don't need any question about that. Then going forward, it'll be, you know, it'll be a little bit more streamlined. And then maybe the next step is, we don't allow, you know, certain credit card payments at the window if that becomes, you know, another money saver. I think I look at this in two ways. One is, it does provide those who want to pay online more convenience. And people are actually accustomed to paying that two, three, four, somewhere five or six dollars per transaction. So the actual cost is pretty competitive. But also, we're actually losing that money that we're just paying to process a credit card. So it's kind of a win-win-win for the customer in that sense. But also, we're going to cut that annual amount we're paying out. We're not certain the amount yet, but I would, to me, it's got to be somewhere in the $20, $25,000 range, but maybe over one full year of operation, we might be able to save. That's an estimate, so I'll stand by that. But hopefully it'll help there.
You've reviewed all this, and you're in favor of this?
Yes, sir.
Greg, I've got a question on page 85. The different companies, it looks like y'all looked at it, it looks like there were four.
And I have an update for that page as well. What's your question?
It says NCO is the one you're looking at. So I've got the $1,500 setup fee, $2.45 per transaction fee, a $700 limit per customer, I guess, per transaction. But it doesn't state over here whether it can be accomplished with existing software, but the other two did. But it doesn't look like to me the NCO is going to be compatible with the software because you're having to go back and pay staff to manually enter it anyway.
Right, they're not compatible, but neither are any of the others. And...
If that's the case, it looks like to me the simulation would probably be a better option. We don't like we explored that, but it doesn't have a setup fee.
No, and they're the ones that, I wanted to give you an update if I could. We met just latter part of last week with Electric Cities as we were exploring software for our utility program. And Summation has either a subsidiary company, or they've been sold out, to a company called Paymentis. Paymentis is offering to go or to set this up for us, doing blind payments with no setup, but their transaction cost per customer is $4.95.
Well, it says right here the town sets that rate.
That was under Summation. But with Paymentis, their rate is $4.95 per transaction. Summation initially had told us, we thought, that they could not interface with our system, and that was their preferred way of doing business. This subsidiary company, Paymentis, has come back and said, yeah, we think we can do it. Whether we are able to accomplish that or not, whether, that not being you do blind payments, the cost per transaction is the same, $4.95. I personally think $4.95 is going to be a deterrent to customers using online bill pay, and we actually want customers to use this. How many will use it is to be seen. I do think the volume is going to be low on the front end, but there are certain things that we can do going forward with your approval that will kind of persuade customers to use this type of payment system.
Well, I can say, Greg, some of my constituents in where I live in my area have asked, been asking this for about two or three years. When is Smithfield going to step forward and have online payment when all other towns and municipalities are offering this? So the efforts is appreciated, and hopefully we can move forward on this, whether we choose tonight or later. But we should be having this option to our customers.
You know, this is a, we're talking $1,500 for a two-year contract. That is a convenience to probably six or 7,000 customers who pay bills every month. And we, Paul, our manager, thinks it'll probably save, it's an estimate, it saves upwards of $20,000 in the first year. Based on that, I move that we approve the request.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
Now, if we're going to do this, I would like for us to have the opportunity to try and negotiate a bit of this contract, for instance.
All of this is determined by Maryland Law. I don't think, I don't know Maryland Law. And I would think that maybe the company would change those. So if the board could agree to that, try to...
I have no problems with that.
As long as it's no more than the transaction fee of $2.45.
I'll be in touch with you.
I'm just kidding.
All right. Okay, moving along.
Thank you for making it possible with your budget approval to allow us to explore the purchase of a VAC truck. It's a critical piece of equipment for the water and sewer department. We also use it to help out in a number of jobs at the water plant. So it's a very critical piece of equipment. It's quite old. It's 20 years old. It is time to replace it. The repair history has not been good the last couple of years. We're spending on the order of about $30,000 in the last couple of years for significant repairs. And even with that, its capability is limited. It won't do some of the things we do, have to have done at the water plant. We have to contract out for those activities. Fortunately, we are members of the National Joint Powers Alliance, and as are about 250 other municipalities in North Carolina. We started working with them on a very detailed spec that would ensure us that we got a piece of equipment that could do all the things that we needed it to do, and that we'd get quality bids from quality vendors. And that's exactly what happened. We got three first-rate firms that gave us a bid for a very good piece of equipment. Those are listed for you. They're on the cover sheet. You approved for us a budget of $340,000 to make this major purchase. We got a very good low bid of $329,000 from a company called Vacall that makes a quality product that meets all the specifications. And so I ask that you would authorize award of this bid to Vacall.
Your old, your old truck, Ken?
Sorry, sir?
The old truck, the existing truck you have now?
Yes, we do.
Are you going to keep that or sell it?
No, we would work with Shannon, and we would make it available on government or whatever, whatever vehicle you suggest.
All right.
Is he done?
He's done. We just need a motion to approve spending a bunch of money?
Well, I make a motion to award a contract to a call, is that the name of the company?
Yes, sir.
To purchase the combination single-engine sewer cleaner and positive displacement vacuum system on a heavy-duty truck chassis.
Second.
Yes, sir.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll just say that this is something we've been talking about a couple of years. We talked about it during the budget session. I'm glad we're moving forward.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. As you know, we've had some good news lately, thanks to the efforts of our town manager and the efforts of Electric Cities. We've had some very positive negotiations with Duke Energy Progress. We have reached a meeting of the minds in terms of both an asset purchase agreement and a purchase power agreement. These documents are in the process of being filed with the North Carolina Utilities Commission and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC. And so those, these documents, once they're filed, will become public information. So very soon, even though this is something we've had to keep very close to the vest, the terms, the numbers will be, will be out and available to the public. In anticipation of that, the question will immediately come, well, what will your rates be? And when you want to answer that question, what you need to start is, what does it cost to provide service? What does it cost to provide service to each of your different classes of customers? Residential, commercial, industrial? And the way to determine that is with a cost of service study. It's a fairly elaborate process. It takes a lot of work, takes a fair amount of expense. Probably that's the reason why we have not done that in approximately 20 years. It's been a very long time for that. That forms the basis, then, of developing recommended rates for you, the council, to consider. And so anticipation of this public notice and the public record that will make these rates available that we've negotiated, I'm asking that you allow us to start on this process of doing a cost of service study and doing a rate recommendation so that we can have something for you to consider once negotiations are complete and agreements are all signed with Duke Energy Progress. I requested two proposals, one from a firm that is nationally recognized, highly recommended by Electric Cities of North Carolina and by the American Public Power Association. That's UFS, Utility Financial Solutions. Another one by a firm that we've had a very good track record of working with that's in North Carolina in Raleigh. That's Power Systems, Power Secure. And you see the two proposals there for you, and you see the total cost for that. I recommend that you award the proposal to the low proposer, which is Utility Financial Solutions, for $30,548.
Ken, I'd like to address this topic. I have some reservations about spending $30,000 for them to tell us our rates are too high. We already know our rates are too high. I would like for us to, I mean, I've asked the staff for rate comparisons at other communities. We've got residential. We still don't have the commercial. But, and no offense to you, but that's why we have you and your department...
Yes.
...is to, is to bring this data to us. I don't feel like that this is a good way of us spending money, and I disagree with having a rate study just so that we can align ourselves when we know we're getting a rate decrease. The staff is telling the citizens and publications and news media articles that our rates are decreasing, and now we want them to spend $30,000 just to look at what they are and how to align ourselves. I would ask you guys to go out and get that data.
Well, that's a very, very good, very good question.
If I may, let me weigh in here, Ken. Just so you understand what, Mr. Scott, what this study does, it doesn't just tell you, lower your rates 10% or 15%. The trick with these, especially with electric rates, is how do you weight that? Because we have some 20-plus different rates, and we have obviously a residential, you know, community that pays. We have kind of a lighter commercial and then industrial. And those rates are very, can be very complicated. And just taking across-the-board reduction, I mean, it just, it just won't work. There'll be more reduction on one side versus the other. And what this rate study does, and all rate studies do, is it does check it against other options that may be there, and it gives you kind of a ratio of, if you lower, just to use a number, if you lower the residential rates 10% and lower the commercial rates 5% and lower the industrial rates 5%, your budget will look like this in the next year. If you lower the residential rate 20% and the industrial rate 15%, and then the medium commercial 8%, here's what your budget will look like. That's what they do. So it's a lot more than just kind of picking a general number and deciding, you know, what we're going to do. And it is... It is very complicated. I mean, yeah, we could do it to a certain extent with staff, but it's a very sophisticated analysis. I just want you to understand, we can do that, but certainly the recommendation and this practice is very common. I think, you know, if it was just plain water and sewer, it'd be a little bit more manageable. When you add the electric to it, it becomes a, becomes quite a sophisticated analysis. And that's why it's very standard to do this. And also, given the fact that we have what we hope will be a wholesale rate reduction, you know, with this asset purchase, that's, you know, we're trying to do it before that becomes reality, knowing then we could hit the ground running, you know, three or four months earlier than if we wait until that rate reduction occurs and then, and then do the study. So again, I mean, we can do it. I'm just telling you, it's a difficult analysis and we'll do the best we can. But I'm just saying, the money, the money would be well-spent to do this and have various options on that.
Isn't it true that we, we have a third-party vendor, Electric Cities, we pay millions to, and they've offered services such as this? Why can't they help us with this?
They could help us. They could help us.
But that's the same question. When we buy power from Electric Cities?
But again, they will tell us in general though, for this analysis, they'll probably send us to one of their local providers. They actually use the same company. There's another local one that actually weighed in here, Power Services, that is referred by Electric Cities. So I don't know how far they'll go. And they won't do the detail that I think this council is, is going to want in terms of that analysis.
So if I understand you correctly, that the service work that's recommended now, that you're speaking of, will give us a complete detail what, what our budget's like in the future, what, how it's going to affect whatever.
We don't know what the cost of electricity is going to be.
We're assuming. If this deal with Duke Progress goes through, which hopefully it will knock on a piece of wood, then our, then our cost of service is going to change a lot, which in the past has really been pretty static. And so we can drop our electric rates after it happens. This is about calculating those future rates if the Progress Energy buys out our power plant deal, not just a regular rate study.
But my point was it would be difficult for your staff to give us more detailed information. Does that understand, Paul?
Yes.
As, as much detailed information as you would get. Is that what you're saying?
That's right.
Let me ask you this, Paul. Could we not, what would hurt if we waited until we got confirmation, not based off?
There's, there's no problem at all with that.
And then we do this.
There's, there's not a problem at all. It's just that it, the rate say it will take three to four months. That's a typical turnaround and not uncommon. That's, that's very reasonable. You know, we were just hoping, you know, optimistic one, that there is going to be a reduction. You know, even with reduction or the, or the asset purchase, say it doesn't conclude in June or July, it's more like August or September, not a big delay. But we would still have the assumed reduction, which I don't think that would change. It would be either it's going to happen or it's not going to happen. But we assume reduction would still be there. If we wait until we have it in hand, then we're, again, we're waiting three or four months, which means we'd have to do a mid-year rate adoption. We'd already be in our budget. We're hoping to be able to hit it, you know, immediately and get the, you know, the rate reduction to our consumers as quick as possible. Again, I, we don't mind waiting. We were just trying to, what I don't want to happen is it happened, everybody say, let's lower rates. And we say, well, we don't know how much to lower it. We have to get a rate study. And then basically somebody saying, why didn't you do that earlier? We're trying to do that earlier. But again, there's no problem with waiting or even waiting a few more months if there's a little bit of discomfort with this, waiting and doing it. I mean, I think if we start it sometime in January, February, we would still be okay. Is that?
Mm-hmm.
I think we'd still be okay in terms of the result, having it by, by June or July.
Personally feel more comfortable with that. We could wait until January, but I'm just one voice. Thank you, it's a little too soon.
I'm okay, Ken. We got, we got plenty of time. We could study some more.
I move we table the request until January, mid.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All right, all right, let's table that. All right, Ken, your last one.
Let me just get there. This is in terms of a contract with Wooton, the Wooton Company. Again, this is a budget item for valve, GPS, GIS work. Most of our knowledge of valves, water valves in the system comes from knowledge, knowledge by experience of our more experienced staff. They are able to generally do fairly well in locating our valves. And so that when we do have a leak or a break, then we can turn those valves and be able to take action and then make the repairs on the, on the damaged section of line. Not the best way to go because we're relying simply on, on memory. It's better if you actually have those valves clearly located. There's a good way to locate them now using GPS technology. It's very quick. And then you can map them on a, on a GIS map. And so this contract would provide for that, for the, for the critical areas for the town of Smithfield. In the process of doing this, it will also produce a map that we can use for a preliminary asset management plan to show our, our pipes in our water system, show our valves. We can indicate the materials and the, the condition of those pipes very simply by annotating that map that's produced as a result of this effort. And then we would submit that map as part of our application for Community Development Block Grant. That application is an extremely competitive process. You get points for having all the things in place that they would like you to have in place. One of the things we don't have in place is an asset management system. So we would utilize the map generated for this to produce a preliminary asset management plan, submit that with our Community Development Block Grant application, and hopefully get those points and make us that much more competitive in getting the grant that we need for about $2.6 million for our water intake improvements.
Ken, let me ask you a question. Do you have a map, a current map of our power lines underground? Our, and the reason I'm asking was former head of our electric department, I don't think he was clear on where our electric lines were. I don't think he was clear on where our main trunk lines were. Do you currently have a map of that?
I'm not, I'm not certain. We have paper copies of, of many individual plans and portions of the town as they were designed and constructed. We have overall system, wouldn't say maps, but overall system drawings that show the general locations on this street, on this block. That's not the level of detail, of course, you want to answer your question. I'm not certain that up with the individual sheets that we have, we have many, many paper sheets of maps, but we do not have the valve locations.
Is that something that normally a city would have?
Yes.
I mean, can we do GIS, GIS mapping for that also?
Yes, we, that's something that we do need, that we do need to do. We are, we are very much lacking in having a utility GIS layer as part of our town GIS system. Some time ago, I do understand that all the paper maps we had were scanned, but that's all that took place. They were not registered, they were not added to the GIS system. And so that's, that effort was unfortunately of no value. But, because that's a major effort that is one of the many things on my list that we do need to, to move forward on and have in place. This would be one of the first step in that. The item that we probably most need is where are the valves exactly? That would be the first layer in a GIS system. And we would integrate that with the town system.
Could, could, could both functions be done at the same time rather than one at a time? Or are they completely different type process for figuring out where those lines are?
Well, this, you, you would not be wasting any effort in terms of finding the valves because that, you know, we, we would pull out all, each of our old water maps and, and conduct that effort. You could do a number of water system, GPS identifications at the same time. That would take a little more effort, would cost a little bit more. So we're trying to do what's most critical right now, which would help us the most in terms of when we have breaks and repairs that need attention.
It's, it's, it's a different process. I mean, it's a different, I mean, it's the same idea, but you're, you're mapping something not entirely above ground, but above ground.
Hot spotlight right there that we can just tap in and it'll show us where everything is.
Unfortunately, I do have a map for quote, everything on my wall from 2001. And I don't know if I've found anything more recent. And that's one I've always looked at. And it's, it's got the basics, but I'm sure it's not got everything on there.
Hey, Smithfield Crossings Project.
Mr. May, I have a question for Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir.
related to this topic. Is it not true in fact that our staff has already performed some of these GPS data coordinates gathering?
I'm not, I'm not aware of that. This, this portion of the budget was developed in cooperation with, with all the staff. In fact, this was developed by Pete Connett as interim director. He worked closely with our water superintendent and other water staff. So no, I do not believe so.
I, I asked Ken to say, I could've sworn we had done this before.
I was told that it has been done and the data was useless.
And, and Ken is, Ken is contacting the county government. I thought we had done incorporation of the county in the past, but, but Pete had set this up before he left. We haven't had a chance to talk to him.
My concern is, I agree that the data needs to be gathered and I think it needs to be planned. I, for $56,000 just to find the valves, I understand the need. However, I want to make sure that we buy, we spend money effectively and the system that we buy is usable by the staff in the field. I mean, and my question to you is how will they access the data?
Well, this, this, the, the key component of this task will be that it must be integrated into our town GIS system. It'll be the first utility layer that will go into our town GIS system. We'll start to build a full utility GIS mapping capability.
Okay, and has it been put out for bid? Why, why only one price from one company?
This is a firm that has helped us with related problems in the past. Mr. Connett, because of that, asked the Wooton Company to give a proposal for that work and then recommended it to me for continued discussion as part of the budget process. And I agreed with him and made that request of you.
My, my question is probably a little more basic. In your report, it says water and sewer department staff relies on memory for most valve locations.
Yes, sir.
Have you explored the memory and written down those, those valve locations?
Well, no, I have not. It, it occurs when there is a, a break. And so we are worried about trying to make the repairs as fast as possible. And one way or the other, we need to find the valves. We have added valves, a few valves, and we have recorded those.
We have nothing in writing that says where valves are.
All, all we have is, is in the case of where there are newer plans that are, that were submitted and valves were part of that work, we do have those valves on some of the newer subdivision and newer commercial plans. But that's very limited. The, the bulk of the valves in our main water system are not on plans. It's, it is quite remarkable. It's something we very much need to rectify.
Would it be helpful though to, to talk to the staff that has memory of those and actually put that in writing for future reference?
Well, that's, we will, that's part of the, that's part of how we will determine where all the, where all the valves are. It's one of the pieces of data that we'll use in this process. And let's say, I think there's a valve over there. We'll try to locate that valve. If we can locate it, then we'll GPS that valve and we'll know exactly where it is. And then we'll add it to the GIS layer in the town system.
Ken, is, do you have an engineering technician on your staff?
We do, and he's, he's a SCADA technician that we use primarily for our SCADA and our electric meters. He's not, he's not, he's not, he does not have experience with GPS to my knowledge.
So you don't have anyone on staff that could go in GPS?
No. I do have some good staff with good memories though, that will, will work with, work with us and work with the engineer to try to locate as many of these valves as possible. And once and for all, get them recorded in a, in a, in a computerized database that we can all have access to. And that will be accessible not only to us in terms of when we have breaks and emergencies, we have improvements, but also for developers and, and other projects in town where they want to know where the valves are. It's the first step of building the GIS for the utilities.
We don't have to do this. I, I, I was like Travis, I asked Ken earlier, I could've sworn, we, we have, we have done something similar to this in the past, maybe it was a paper version. We can delay this if you want, want for more research.
Well, we bid a lot of things out. We take bids. Why, again, I hear what you're saying about you agreeing with Pete Connett, why don't you bid this out? What, what?
Well, for, for engineering.
I disagree with just having what he says. I mean, we, you're in the part.
No, I, I, I agree. But for engineering services, we, we have traditionally not sought bids except for very large projects. For instance, if we were doing a, a water plant, we would seek bids for that, for the engineering side and of course the construction side. This is a smaller engineering effort. This is a firm that does know the town system, has done a lot of work on the town water system. And so that's why he turned to them. That's why I'm comfortable working with them as well. They would not be starting from scratch.
Mr. Griffin, do you have a relationship with anybody at the county that works in a GIS department that does this stuff every day?
I have, I have a, a good relationship with the utility manager.
I would ask that you contact them and, you know, see, you know, what they're, how they do theirs. Obviously theirs is a lot bigger than ours. And I, would it be complicated to ask you to put it out for bid and specifically state what data you're seeking? For one, I mean, they could come in and say, there's a valve, but how are we going to validate this valve? You know, there's so many things that is comprehensive here that us council don't even understand. But I just feel like for that amount of money and what the project is, I think we need to take a very serious look at it and possibly put it out for bid. Would that be, would you object to that?
I don't, I think you should, you'd be better served to get informal bids, not a formal bid. And you're not required to since this is a service contract, not a utility. But the informal bid would give you the same. It's what we've done the other, other projects. You, you call and get two, three or four contractors.
Is there a reason it's not already done in an informal bid?
I think you've heard why. Because it was more of an engineering assignment as opposed to a, just a raw services like computer and using an engineer that's worked in your town a lot. You know, typically we'll have a savings. I think that's, that's the answer to that. But again, we can get other, we can get other engineering firms to look at it and, you know, see what their prices would be, which I don't think would, would be harmful at all.
Let me clarify my son. The state of North Carolina has a general statute that says you cannot solicit bids for professional services. For architects, engineers, landscape architects, surveyors, you have to solicit qualifications and then you select based on qualifications. So then you negotiate a price.
Is that a problem?
No, but I'm just saying when you say bids, if you put out a bid package, an engineering firm is supposed to tell you they will not bid on it. But you can chop around.
Informally, but informal bid out.
But you can't, you can't solicit qualifications, bid and negotiate a price.
I mean, in theory, with the proposal of RFP instead of a request for, for a bid, you get the top two, three or four candidates, professional candidates. You assess their professional capabilities, decide who you think is best, then you choose one, try and negotiate a price. If you're unhappy with the price, then you basically dismiss them and go to the next one. I mean, formally, that's how the services contract would be, would be conducted.
Well, I think, I recommend you do that.
You asked if I had any, any concerns. The one issue that I do have a need for is we need to have at least a preliminary asset management plan to submit as part of our application for Community Development Block Grant. Because points are given for each element that the community has in running their utility properly. That's not an element we have. With the highly competitive nature of that grant, with the many communities like us that are after those limited funds, I would like us to be able to get those points. To do that work, that preliminary asset management plan that would come from this map, that works about $6,800. I do feel there's a need for us to be able to proceed with that on a timely basis. The application deadline now has moved from early September to early October. And if we wait till the next board meeting, we'd not have the ability to get that task done. So if, if you would allow me to proceed with that particular component, $6,800 to do the preliminary asset management plan map, so I could submit that with the grant application, that would meet that concern that I just laid out for you.
There's a big difference between $6,800 and $56,000.
Well, yes, sir. That's, but that's just one piece of this effort. But that's the piece that's.
That one includes the GPS or GIS mapping at all?
I'll make a motion that we put out for informal bid for GIS, GPS of our system and allow him to spend the $68,000 for the.
$6,800.
$6,800, excuse me, for the plan as he indicated he needs for the, the points for the grant.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that?
Well, we can't put a bid out.
No, we could do an informal one.
It's an RFP.
No, it's an informal RFP. No, it's an informal RFP.
Any other discussion?
And you're going to let him go ahead and spend the $6,800 to do whatever it is he wants?
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Those who cares.
Thank you.
Ken, it's your night.
Yes, sir.
Let's keep this one short, please.
Yes, sir. We have a system at our principal Brogdon Road substation that monitors the performance and the actions and the equipment, the principal equipment at that substation. It's called our SCADA system, Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition System. The software and the technology for that system is quite old. It's unsupported. It needs to be upgraded. The software very much needs to be upgraded. It does not link well with our newer computers at utilities department. Very difficult for our staff to access that data. The information is not easily provided to our field crews and to our superintendents when there is a problem at the Brogdon Road substation. It's a very old technology whereby we get a very minimal notification. So it's past time that we need to upgrade the system. This was not something that we asked for in this current budget. Came to my attention a little too late in the process. But in the process, though, we have been fortunate to be very aggressive in terms of pricing on a couple items. One is the vehicle that's used by our engineering technician. Second is the generator that we needed for our lift station. And we had significant savings in these items. And so my request is that you allow the savings in those two capital items, along with a limited amount of money from our equipment and maintenance fund, to be redirected toward this upgrade of our SCADA system for our electric utility. And this is principally an equipment maintenance and repair line item.
Ken, how old is that operating software?
About 10 years old, 10, 11, 12 years old.
And that particular piece of software is just for that station?
That is just for our electric SCADA. And our electric SCADA now is only for our Brogdon Road substation. But there's many elements of that substation that we get information on.
Are we going to be facing any of these, the same issue with any other substation?
Well, we only have two substations. The other substation is one that we do not own. We pay a fee to do energy progress for that substation. So no, we would not. Eventually down the road, it would be desirable that we'd have the full electric system as part of a SCADA. But that's not a high priority at this time. We have our full water and sewer system as part of a separate water and sewer SCADA. We've just completed upgrading that. We'll have a presentation for you for that coming up soon. That's something that works quite well. So we're in good shape there on our water and sewer SCADA.
Has anything happened since we went through the budget process that brought the problems with the substation alike?
Well, as we focused on upgrading the SCADA system for water and sewer that you provided the funding for, I asked the question about the electric SCADA and found out we had it for the Brogdon Road substation, but we had a lot of deficiencies, a lot of operational problems. And I discovered that very late in the budget process, too late to bring that up.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I'm making a motion to approve this request.
Motion, I need a second. Who's second? All right. Motion and a second, any discussion? Let's have some open discussion on it.
Well, I mean, it just, Ken, I appreciate your delay. I feel like you're in the hot seat because you didn't ask a lot of questions.
That's okay.
You know, these are the things, we need to be proactive and keep these things maintained.
Yes.
I appreciate that you're finding that this needed to be maintained and upgraded. These are the things we need to do, you know, although we're spending money off budget, although you found the money within your budget from savings.
Yes, sir.
These are exactly the things that we need to do and keep maintained to stay ahead of the curve, so to speak.
Well, there'll be many more discoveries like this, unfortunately. We have many needs that have not been addressed over the years. Not so much with electric, more so with water and sewer. And it's going to be a tough process to get us to where we need to be. But we will get there with your help.
Well, I'm thankful we have a new utility director because it's obvious to me that in the past, these things were overlooked.
I agree. No, and I've said that before, we need to bring some things up. A lot of things have been neglected. Perhaps we got a motion and a second to approve Ken's expenditure of $17,000, of which he's found several items of savings in his budget already, so it would be a bunch of money.
What else can you save in your budget? You say there's multiple things we got to fix. And then, budget, we request an electric car. Is that a necessity right now?
Well, we-
Now, I don't see that that's a necessity compared to what you're saying here.
Yes, sir. We did apply for a competitive grant for that. We did get a grant for the car and the charging station.
Well, my question, and forgive me, I missed some of the budget meetings due to illness.
Yes, sir.
If we have stuff that needs to be fixed within our facilities, why don't we request an electric car? I don't think that's necessarily a necessity. I think that's more of a won't.
Yes, sir.
I would like to hear your view on that.
The request was made because of the grant that was, the notice was made to us. We investigated that grant opportunity. We thought it was a good chance to succeed in getting that grant. We applied for that grant and we got the grant for both the vehicle and the charging station.
The full grant?
Pardon?
Pays for the whole car?
It pays for the cost differential between the regular vehicle and electric vehicle, pays that full differential. And pays for the charging station.
I asked Ken the same thing. We had talked in our office about it. It seems wasteful, but the federal government-
I agree. I think it's, to me, it's a waste of money.
Well, the federal government's throwing money out.
But honestly, again, if that being said, I was not part of all the budget meetings due to illness and I do apologize and rehash something. But my question to you was, if you're finding things you know will have to find ways to save money, I think that's just one way we really, I think that was not a smart move to do. Although they are throwing money at us, I just don't think that's the right thing to do.
Amen, brother.
I think in the future, we need to look at, just because people are throwing money at us, grants, you don't always have to take every grant for an electric car. Come on.
We had the same conversation.
So I disagreed with that. If I'd been in the budget section, I would.
Well, as part of that, as part of that analysis, when we decided to, whether it was worthwhile to proceed, whether it made sense to proceed, I developed an analysis of what the operational costs are. And with that grant, it made the operation of an electric vehicle very favorable. When you get a grant that pays for the battery portion of the vehicle, electric vehicles become very competitive, especially with the time of day rate that we have in the town of Smithfield. And electricity that that vehicle would use would only be used during the favorable, low-cost time of day rates that we have. And so with that, it made sense to make that purchase. It was a cost-efficient purchase. And that's why I made the request to you.
And that car be driven during business hours, correct?
That's right.
Let's make sure of that.
Yes, sir. Have not taken any action on that vehicle yet. Have taken action on the charging station.
I'm going to future, we need to be more-
Sorry?
I think in the future, we might need to be more mindful of what we need in our facility opposed to of a want.
Yes, sir.
Possibility of a grant. I think you should be looking for more grants to help fix the facility as opposed to an electric car.
Yes, sir.
What to say about that?
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on that? Motion and a second, all right. I'm looking for a motion to approve. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Those who cares.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Paul, if you want to give us an update on compensation for void rewards?
Yes, Mayor. If you recall, during the budget workshop, there was a question about the salary of our present planning board members and board of adjustments. And staff was asked to consult with both planning board and the board of adjustments to get their recommendation or their input regarding any kind of increase on their present compensation, which is $10 per meeting. We were able to talk to the planning board fairly quickly because they had a meeting in July. And they were generally in favor of the meeting or of the increase at their meeting. And after the general discussion, their recommendation is to increase the monthly compensation for the planning board members to $50 per month. Took us a little bit longer with the board of adjustments because they have not met. So we called them over the last couple of weeks and spoke to the board of adjustment. So they were contacted by staff for their input. And basically, general consensus was they were somewhat supportive. Just to give you the breakdown, two members said the compensation amount should increase to $50, they said per meeting. Two members from the board of adjustment stated that they would agree with the recommendation of the other members. And two other members did not respond. And one member stated that they were not in favor of any increase. So a little bit of everything there from the board of adjustment in terms of their input and their desires. My original recommendation was consider increasing the stipend for the planning board to somewhere between $25 and $50 per month. I would lean toward the $50 per month for the planning board and consider increasing the stipend amount for the board of adjustment to a $30 per meeting instead of per month for them. And the reason I take a difference with the board of adjustment on a per-meeting basis is because they do meet so infrequently and they're used to the per-meeting now. I mean, they may only meet twice a year sometimes. And so the pay per meeting makes a little bit more sense. The planning board, depending on their activity level, they're a regular almost every month unless it just happens to be a slow month, and that's actually rare. But they can't have special meetings and meet more than a month. And it's just more of an administrative hassle to keep up with the per-meeting. And I think they should be paid the same amount per month because whether they are actually meeting once or twice, they're still doing a lot of work. And I think they should get more compensation than just the $10 per meeting. And I think especially this year coming up, and hopefully in the future, they'll be more active, they are going to have some pretty intense meeting with the UDO review. That's going to be a timely process, so I think in time it's pretty good there. Again, I'll stand by the recommendation. I would lean toward the higher end of that. But, you know, right now, they are only getting $10 per meeting. And also, just to complete the review, if you recall, we did look, and really to my surprise, many towns don't pay their planning boards much at all, if anything. That was a surprise to me. I was familiar with boards receiving at least this minimum stipend on a regular monthly basis. But we checked many other towns, and there were some wide variants. But the general consensus was they were paid on the lower end of that spectrum or not at all for planning boards and board of adjustments, just to be fair and full disclosure. Mayor, that's all I have.
Are you talking about effective immediately or the next budget?
Well, that's certainly, that's certainly up to council. We could do, we could afford it for this year, though, if that's the council's inclination. If you're wanting to take action, I would just ask that you delay it until, you know, the next month so we can start off on a square month. But if you'd like to do it for this budget year, if you make the approval, then I'll just ask for a budget amendment. And we can make up the difference pretty easily with the additional merit compensation that is available. That would be enough to cover this adjustment.
Mayor, I'd like to speak on this topic. I've talked with some of the people that volunteer for our planning board and the board of adjustments. And I think this is just a small token for us to say and appreciate the work that they do for us. And I think this request is very reasonable considering the staff has received the increase and the council also received somewhat of an increase. I feel like that this is, again, just a way of saying thank you. And also, they're fixing to undertake a huge project with the UDO, which is going to add time they're going to be at the meeting. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, as is written, $50 per month for the planning board and the $25 per month, per meeting for the board of adjustments, effective as soon as is convenient.
October, October 1.
Just to piggyback on what Councilman Scott said, I mean, they are just as important to the growth of Smithfield as anybody. Matter of fact, they are the growth. It comes to them first than it comes to us. And I take a lot out of their minutes, and I take a lot of their knowledge and their, all the research they do ahead of time as well with Mr. Emble, so I think it's justified, in my opinion.
I second that motion.
All right. Well, I got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right. This time, we'll open the meeting for council members' comments. I'd like to start off by saying I was going to pull Michelle Denning aside after the meeting and tell her not to use my public comment time for political gain. But as a citizen, she has sat through this meeting the whole time. If you had scooted out right after your speech, I would give you a hard time. But since you're staying here for the whole meeting, it's okay. Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring up a couple of topics. One is the West Smithfield Beautification Project. I think you all are aware that we've been working on doing some beautification work between the bridge and McDonald's in West Smithfield. Our staff put together a, what I would call a rough drawing, although I couldn't begin to do what was drawn. So it's really not all that rough a drawing, but it is a tentative proposal, I would say. And Lenny Branch and myself have taken time to go and meet with the landowners over there to present what the tentative plan is for that beautification project. We have met with virtually every landowner over there. The overall support was very positive. I think Lenny had one person who was worried about shrug blocking her coming out of her house. We had one, I think at Wallace Welding, was a little concerned about the ability for a tractor-trailer rig to come in and out of their facility to drop off welding supplies. But basically, it's been a very positive experience. I think we're at a point where we need to go to the next step with this project. And I would like to make a motion that the council directs our staff to go forward with the West Smithfield Beautification Project.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion?
I would like to have a little discussion. What I think needs to happen is, once this gets going, Paul, Paul, we make sure that we meet with those landowners. I guess this will be a public hearing, or we have, how will this proceed?
We have to have a public hearing to the council, ask them about the resolution to go to the executive west of the law.
Well, what I would like to make sure we do in this process is that we, once we start going down this road, we make sure all the landowners are in the loop of what's going on and that we talk with them about the exactness of where the dry blades and plantings and all are going to be. And I'm sure you'll do that, but that's all I have to say.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Those who cares. Any other council members?
I do have one other comment, very briefly. It's just a comment. A number of months ago, I had a gentleman over to speak to us about converting some of our cars over to gas, to natural gas, LP gas. And I remember some of the conversations we had. But I just want to say that Smithfield, I'm sorry, Stephen Sausage was one of those that had signed up on their program. And I happened to see Mike Stevens the other day at my warehouse with his pickup truck with that tank in the back of it. And he bragged to me and told me he was paying $1.29 for gas. I'm just telling you, that's what he told me. I don't know if it's true.
I don't know if it's true, but he said they buy in volume, so they get heck of a price, and that wasn't what, and I'm looking at the chief, but that wasn't what we were told. But I just wanted to...
The price of propane has come down a lot since...
Well, I just wanted to throw that out. It might be something more than what we looked at a few months ago. It's just an observation.
Any other comments?
I have one comment I'd like to make very brief, Mayor, and I've talked with you about this topic and many of the councilmen as well. And it's even in tonight's meeting. There's things that come up in the formal town council meeting that I feel like further discussion and further gathering of teamwork would be more effective. I think that, I feel like for us to better understand the topic and have more time to interact with the department heads, all get on the same page more. I would like to ask that we, in the future, one, look at having some type of group to get together to kind of get on the same page as a group and move forward as a team, and secondly, possibly look at having some work sessions throughout the year. That's all I'll say about that. I feel like, and I'll just say, you know, don't confuse my compassion as anger. My compassion as anger, I'm not angry. I just, there's a lot of topics that feel like there's a lot more discussion here, and our department heads do a lot of time and studying, but we have 10 minutes with them in a public session. It tends to sometimes be stressful to really understand the true facts of things, so I'll leave it at that, but I'd just like to say to the staff, thank you for the work that they do, and I look forward to building a stronger team amongst us.
No, it's a good idea, and Selma has a work session midway through the month for every one of their meetings. Shannon, if you would, how about polling all the, send an email out to the city council and ask how many work sessions they would like to have, or if they do want to have them, or what length, or whatever, let's see.
Well...
We just poll ourselves.
I was going to, that was one of the things I was going to address, Travis, and some of you may remember that when I first got on the council, I suggested that we have a second meeting, a workshop meeting, or agenda-setting meeting, and tonight, that really came home with the why. I mean, Greg and Ken, I felt like you guys were getting beat up, but you weren't. It's because we get this agenda packet, and we have a week or less to study and understand these issues. Some of them tonight, we've talked about before, but a lot of them, we just don't understand, and so, that's why you get the barrage of questions. I think that if we had an informal workshop meeting, non-mandatory, maybe halfway between the meetings to address some of these, some of them, I think, we probably know we're going to be on the agenda, and we just sort of have a roundtable discussion to sort of educate ourselves and to know more about it as opposed to just rushing around.
Many of the city council people will need to be a formal meeting.
It can be an open meeting, but I'm just, I know it has to be an open meeting, but anyway. This is a roundtable discussion, similar to a budget session.
We have a meeting, and it'll have to be published and advertised and all.
Definitely needs to be open, but...
Other towns do it.
Yes.
I think if the verbiage is a workshop, you know, you wouldn't have formal action at that meeting. I mean, we could agree to that, but I just think it's healthy that we get together.
Well, I will poll the council, see how many other members feel the same way. And also, we've started having these suppers before the meetings. If anybody wants to, has a really serious question, normally, I just pick up the phone and call, because we get the agenda several days in advance. And like today, I came in at 6:00, and I just quizzed Ken about a few items and had him call Pete Connick or send an email to Pete, because I could have swore we had done this GPS.
Well, and that is good, too, but the issues we decide are very important in Smithfield, not to be decided in a week or an hour before the meeting starts. I think a lot more investigation needs to be done.
I am glad to stay here and have meetings every week if we want to have, until 3:00 at night if we need to.
Wonderful. Travis, I want to...
Thank you, Roger.
They should not be managed. The other comments I have, and these will be brief, is my monthly update on the pending litigation. The mediation was held. We're going to get a report on the mediation tonight, later. The district attorney, as we saw in the media, they are still doing their investigations. They actually have asked for the deposition transcripts, and there was a snafu getting them to them. Have they now been gotten to the DA's office?
I've never heard from the DA.
Okay.
Ever.
All right. They wanted the deposition transcript.
Yeah, I mean...
I don't think I've told my attorney that we can't get...
Maybe they talked to our council, and I wasn't part of that. I have not heard, I know our council, I think, was requesting, had to be requested by subpoena, and that's the last I heard, and that was coming from our council on the case. So, maybe they talked to Mr. Kyle or Mr. Jeremy about that, if they could have.
I'll follow up with the DA tomorrow then to see what they... Because there was some concern by the DA's office of the cost of the transcript, and I said, well, they're available digitally. And then, it was like, well, need to have a subpoena or something. Anyway, mediation's been had, we'll get a report on it, so stay tuned. That was all.
All right.
I got one more thing.
I want you to have two more, and then I'm going to cut you off, because you've said one more.
Sometimes I think that we don't necessarily get the word out on how much work goes via the employees of this town, and some of you sit there and you hear us looking, we're all looking at this paper, y'all don't necessarily know what we're looking at. But I wanted to report a couple of things that you may not realize, but we get a monthly report from our city manager, and as an example, the police department last month, it processed 2,189 calls for service, including 11 calls relating to residential business burglaries. And the total number of police calls year-to-date is 16,134, which is almost 1,600 more in calendar year-to-date than last year. Our fire department, the past month, the fire department handled 173 response calls, including 14 structure fires, five confirmed as structure fires, and dispatched 105 EMS rescue calls. Another thing that, maybe there's some trashy people in Smithfield, I don't know, but on the Public Works Report, they handled 252 work orders, which are above and beyond things that they normally do, but they collected 428 tons of household waste last month and 134 tons of residential yard debris, not to mention the 70 animal control responses. So, and parking record goes on, they had 18,819 participants with direct contact last month. They had 4,950 participants in programs, not spectators, but actual people in programs, and they had almost 7,000 member visits at Shrek. So, I think sometimes you don't realize how much our staff does, and I want the citizens and the folks here to realize how hard these folks work and how thankful we should be to have them.
Well said.
All I got. I promise.
All right. Moving along. Paul Stabes, town managers report.
Mayor, the portions that Mr. Harris hasn't already summarized for you, I'll move past those, and I thank you for bringing that up, because it is important to let people know how much our staff does and how much they get done every month, and these numbers are pretty typical for an average month. Following up on Mr. Harris's comments on the west side improvement, just wanted to bring you up to date also that I think the plan, and that's one thing that we've been kind of waiting for, this to move forward kind of movement. I'm going to talk to Mr. Emblor afterwards, the plan that Mr. Harris is talking about. It is, it's a rough draft of a plan, but the next phase, which I think Mr. Emblor can do, I'm not going to speak for him, but I think he can do in at least 60 days, 30 might be pushing it, but he's got to draw on the actual curb cuts after discussing it with some of the owners, and then base the ideas, draw those in. I think maybe as early as possible to have a public meeting where they can come in and see that without really a resolution on the table, get comment, and then come back the next month and maybe have the public hearing and a resolution to adopt. Kind of a two-step process, but I think that would make the plan a little bit stronger, and I think that time-wise, Mr. Emblor could meet that. So, that'll be our approach, if that's all right. Couple of things, of course, you've got the report, the meeting or the final strategic plan update, again, as I reported last month, Mr. Rocky Lane is preparing that. He still hopes to have that to us by mid or by the end of September, so we'll hope to get that. I'm not sure if he's going to do just a final draft, or a final draft, or a final report with his next version, so we'll see. I'm going to talk to Rocky this week and see where he is, but he does promise he'll have something to us this month. And the council planning board, I'm sorry, the planning board had a really good meeting in July on the UDO. I think they went through, was it nine chapters, Paul?
Seven.
Seven chapters, which was a lot, actually. That was pretty heavy lifting for a first meeting, so they're off to a really good start. They won't all go that quickly. I can see them spending two or three months alone just on the sign ordinance, so some will be much slower than others, but they did get off to a good start. They're meeting again this month to have their second meeting on that UDO revision. Also, one other comment, the police department, they are going to have their final site visit here in the next 30 days on their Kalia certification, which has been a strong project. They're in good shape for it, so I wish them luck. We'll be thinking about them when they go through that process, and I think they are prepared, and it'll be a good visit by the experts who give them their certification. Also, you may have seen some of the emails, but there was a complaint, a very legitimate complaint about the traffic slowdowns on 70 in front of JCC, and with the work of Mr. Emblor and the police department who went out there and spent a couple mornings just kind of observing the delays and where they were and when they were, basically, it came down to kind of a light sequence at the stoplight there. DOT got the message, and really, the next day, I think, they adjusted, went out there themselves and looked, and then adjusted the light sequencing, and so, they had it really adjusted in about three days from when they first got their phone call, contact from us, and they had good information from the police department, which we appreciate, which made their job much easier. So, they adjusted that, and I won't say the traffic disappeared, but it was vastly improved. I know the police went back out there the last couple of days, and it was much, much better after the light sequencing was changed. Again, it's busy, it's the morning, there's a lot of kids going there in the morning, so it's a busy time, but it was improved vastly after that adjustment. So, I want to thank DOT and certain of the police department for its efforts there, but I think we're in good shape, in good shape for a little bit. And Mayor, still working on the other projects that are on the sheet, and that's all I have. Unless there's some questions from the council.
Any questions for Paul? Okay. This time, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion, go into closed session in pursuant to NCGS 143, 318, on 11, Section A 3.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye. All right. All right.